We are now streaming, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Town Clerk. Welcome to this meeting of the Tavistock Town Council. I'm councillor Anne Johnson, Mayor of Tavistock Town Council. I will now ask members present to indicate by physical show of hands that they can hear proceedings. Please. Thank you. For any joining by audio link, only I will come to shortly. I don't think there's anybody joining by audio link today, is there, Town Clerk? No. Can we now please take a roll call of councillors present? Mrs Smallorum, can you please take the roll call?
I will.
Councillor Crawford. Councillor Ellis. Councillor Mrs Ewing.
Present.
Councillor Fay. Councillor Hutton. Can't see councillor Hutton.
No.
Sorry, I just forwarded him the link again.
Looks like he's coming into the meeting now. Councillor Hutton, are you present?
My apologies, just roaring in.
Okay. Councillor Mrs Johnson obviously here, councillor Lewis.
Good evening, everyone.
Councillor Mrs Mann.
Yes.
Councillor Moody. Councillor Mrs Parker.
Present.
Councillor Mr Parker.
Present.
Councillor Barry Smith. Councillor Harry Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Squire.
Yes, present.
Councillor Venning. Councillor Ward.
Hello, yes, I'm here.
And councillor Williamson.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Smallorum. Councillors and officers are asked to ensure that they have included their name against their thumbnail video so that they can be clearly identified by viewers. There's there. May I take this opportunity to remind councillors that, subject to certain conditions, standing orders provide for speaking once on each item on the agenda. Members who wish to speak are asked to indicate by raising their hand, either physically in the room or on the chat facility. The quorum for this council meeting is six. We have, I think we have a full house. May I remind councillors and the public that the documents for this meeting are available on the council website? Please note, members are asked not to use the shared documents facility in this meeting. In addition, may I remind you all to stay muted until called to speak and to re-mute once you have spoken. When I call you to speak, I will state your name. In the interests of transparency, try not to use the comments facility to communicate during the meeting other than with myself in the open forum. In no circumstances should it be used for private discussions. Voting will either be by assent of the members or by roll call vote. For a roll call, members are asked to state either for, against or abstain when asked. If a councillor declares an interest, they will be temporarily removed from the meeting until the matter has been resolved and then readmitted. When the public part of the meeting concludes, there will be a brief adjournment for 10 minutes to enable councillors to log back in for the confidential part of proceedings. Thank you. Right, we now stop the business of the meeting to be carried out tonight. Number one, apologies. I think everybody's here, so there should be no apologies for absence.
Great, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Two, declarations of interest. To receive disclosures of unregistered other interests from councillors on matters to be considered at the meeting, the disclosure shall include the nature of the interest. If a member becomes aware during the course of a meeting of an interest that has not been disclosed under this item, they must immediately disclose it. Under the Code of Conduct, councillors with an interest, whether or not it is disclosable, a pecuniary interest or other interests must leave the room for the duration of consideration of the item to which the interest relates. Now move on to item three, minutes of the council meeting. To confirm the minutes of the meeting of Tavistock Town Council held on Tuesday, the 3rd of November 2020. They are enclosed. If we go through them page by page. So I'll start with page one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I think at nine B, Town Clerk, there is an amendment to the draft minutes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Following conversations with the proposer in relation to minute number 139 little b, the following amended wording is suggested, which would be resolved that the council agrees to the tenant being given the 15-month period in return for a lump sum of £20,160. Furthermore, that the council agrees to waive the £1,700 outstanding debt. So that would be a replacement wording for what you have before you. Clearly, if members want any detailed discussion upon this, it would need to be in the closed session. But in terms of the procedure of the minute, that's something which is quite appropriate to have at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was the proposer and I'm happy with that as the correct record.
Thank you very much. So we now move on to page 10. So we have the minutes of the last meeting before you. Is it?
Move the minutes, Madam.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Do you have a second for that, please? Councillor Williamson, those in favour, please show. Thank you very much. Move on now to item four, public representations and questions. To receive any written representations or previously submitted questions from members of the public in attendance. And we have not had any submitted. Items requiring decision. Item five, Budget and Policy Committee. To consider the minutes of the meeting of the Budget and Policy Committee held on Tuesday, the 1st of December 2020, which are enclosed. If I can ask councillor Hutton, please, to take this item. Councillor Hutton, you're on mute.
I'll do these by road, but then there are a few that I've got to read out. Bear with me, please. Minute 151, apologies for absence. 152, confirmation of minutes. 153, declaration of interest. 154, budget preparation and precept setting for 2021/22. And there's some recommendations under this one, so I shall read these out. Recommended that council A endorse in principle the submitted draft council budget 2122 and in-year adjustments as prepared. Incorporating revenue budget savings identified previously by council and the further adjustments arriving as at the finance workshop, together with the additional savings and adjustments as included, on the basis of meeting the cost of lost income caused by coronavirus and those accruing from new responsibilities, brackets Guildhall, Public Convenience and Gateway Centres. B, endorse any cost centre surpluses available as our financial year end and not otherwise identified, be carried forward to the General Reserve 2122. C, receive the rolling capital programme and the fixed assets register. D, agree to the release of the £50,000 earmarked reserve for a burial ground to apply against the impacts of lost commercial income in the current financial year. E, endorse the proposed amendment of car park tariffs to the Guildhall car park to £50 per half hour and £1 per hour respectively. F, consider a schedule of fees and charges at its next meeting. So I'd like to recommend that, please.
Thank you. So we've got a proposal. Do we have a second for those, please? Councillor Mrs Parker, thank you. Open it for debate, any debates? Right, put it to the vote then. Those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried.
Thank you. 155, statement of internal control. Recommendation here that council endorse and re-adopt, re-adopt the statement of internal control. I will propose that.
Thank you. A second please. Councillor Mrs Parker. Save them for debate. Anybody have any comments, questions? Right, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried.
156, Guildhall Car Park. A recommendation that council offer the police authority use of a designated car parking space at the end of Market Road nearest the post office. I propose that.
Thank you. A second please. Councillor Mrs Parker, thank you. Open for debate, questions? Councillor Parker?
Just a question, Madam Mayor. Has there been any progress on that? How did the police take that?
Town Clerk or General Manager?
We haven't communicated it to the police as yet, pending the decision that we have before us.
Thank you. So that's been recommended and seconded. So we'll put it to the vote now. Those in favour, please show. Thank you, members.
157, coronavirus and annual leave. Some recommendations here that, subject to meeting the statutory minimum annual leave requirement, staff be allowed for the current year only to carry forward up to an additional, i.e. on top of the five-day provision already in situ, two and a half days annual leave to the next leave year. In view of the exceptional circumstances applying to the current year and the contribution made by staff to the work of the council in the most challenging of times, and by way of appreciation, the council allocate two days additional holiday to each member of staff to be taken on designated days at Christmas. For those market staff whose services were not able to close at that time, the two days to be taken before the end of January. I propose that.
Thank you. A second please. I'll go for councillor Venning that time, thank you very much. Any questions or debates on that matter? Councillor Parker?
I wanted just, Madam Mayor, that reading that, it implies that that's a continuing additional two days into the future. Is that correct?
Town Clerk?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch what councillor Parker said. If it was what I thought it was, this is two days specifically and solely for this year in relation to coronavirus. It does not change the leave entitlement of members of staff in future years and it's effectively two days allocated on the 30th and the 31st of December this year over and above by way of an employer allocation. But I couldn't quite catch what you said, so if I've answered the wrong question, I apologise.
You've answered the question that I asked, yes. But that's not what the, that's not what the recommendation says. So could I suggest that it be slightly amended to allocate two days additional holiday in this leave year? And having said that, there was a good debate at the Budget and Policy Committee about this, where members expressed their gratitude to the staff for all the effort that they put in. And this is partial recognition of that. But I think it would be helpful if the whole council expressed that and endorsed that view as well. They've done an absolutely splendid job during the course of this crisis.
Yep, thank you.
So does anybody, I mean, I'm quite happy to propose that little amendment in this year. Is that, is that, people are seconded, that?
Yeah, councillor Venning, thank you. Any other comments or questions on it? Right, can we vote on that then, please? Those in favour, please show. Yeah. And as councillor Parker said, I mean, the staff have been absolutely outstanding this year. Been flexible, understood the needs of the council and worked to, worked together to make sure that we achieved an operational council during some very difficult and extremely challenging times. So I know that all members are extremely grateful to the staff for all their efforts this year. Thank you. Councillor Hutton?
158, sustainability, this is items for information only. 158, sustainability and environment working group. 159, external auditor certificate for 2019/20. 160, Panier Market update. 161, pension shareholding. 162, time capsule. And there are some other minutes that we'll go in part two, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Hutton. Councillor Smith?
Madam Mayor, I haven't listened back to the, listened to the recording back, but I believe I did say that Tavistock Primary School are involved as well in the time capsule.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're happy to take that as an amendment to the minutes as presented. Thank you. Right, so we've done the item five. Item six, then we move on to, which is general finance, schedule of payments to consider endorse the monthly accounts as at the 31st of October 2020. Any comments or questions on those? Town Clerk?
I just wanted to apologise to colleagues for their circulation. They should be on the website and I think it was, there was an error and they were circulated in paper form, so my apologies to colleagues for that.
Thank you for that. So we note those, thank you. And then B, budget monitoring, to consider and endorse the budget monitoring report to 31st of October 2020. I think that's noted. I mean, members have been through the budget in great, great detail, that budget and policy line by line, so it's a continuing thing with the budget at the moment. So thank you very much for that. No comments, questions? Right, item seven, Development Management and Licensing Committee. To receive and consider the minutes of the meeting of the Development Management and Licensing Committee held on the 24th of November 2020. Councillor Ward, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I rise virtually to present the minutes for said meeting. Starting with minute 142, apologies for absence. 143, confirmation of minutes. 144, declarations of interest. 145, Dartmoor National Park Authority. 146, town planning issues. 147, general correspondence. 148, urgent business brought forward at the discretion of the chairman. 149, A, planning decisions. And 149B, new planning applications, from which follows a recommendation that the views of the town council, as listed in appendix B, be passed to the local planning authority for consideration.
Thank you, councillor Ward. So we have a recommendation. Can I have a second for that, please? Thank you, councillor Fay. Any questions or comments? Put it to the vote then, please. Those in favour, please show. Thank you, members. Okay. Move on to item eight now, time capsule, to receive an all-member report in connection with the council content for a time capsule. Councillor Smith, I assume that this is you, please?
Yes, I've, I've not had any further. Councillors were asked if they needed, if there was anything else they came up with to forward them to me. I've not received any additional suggestions, so I will be progressing the suggestions we did have previously. And that's all I can say. The, the hope is to come, to have everything ready for the time capsule by the end of February, which will allow the schools next term to, to work on them and to the capsule to be buried in March next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Smith. I do come back to members if you do need any other information or suggestions at all. If you've got any, you don't think you've got enough stuff, because I'm sure that between us, we could come up with some more ideas. Thank you for that.
I will do, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Yes, councillor Ward has got his hand on it, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ward, beg your pardon.
That's all right, thank you, Madam Mayor. I may have missed it, because I don't think the list of what might be included in the capsule appears in the BNP minutes. I wonder whether councillor Smith would kindly just give us an idea of what is being proposed?
I can, Madam Mayor. What was, oh, sorry, what was proposed was that I approach the town freeman Ted Sherrill to write one of his pieces, which he is in favour of doing. We'll get on with that if the meeting agrees tonight. There's some of the photographs from Facebook during the pandemic. The photograph by Paul Johnson from the top of St Eustatius with the empty town. And there was a suggestion of putting some real money, but I'm not sure whether that's, that's a goer at the moment. But any other suggestions, I'm happy to take them on board.
Thank you. Councillor Ward?
Thank you. Had you considered putting in a current local newspaper? One that refers to the effect of the Covid pandemic on the town? I think that would be a useful thing to put in. I know they do fade with time, but it'll be in the dark, so the print should last.
The feeling, the feeling seems to be, yes, councillor Ward, that anything in black and white survives a lot longer than anything in colour. So certainly newspaper print would be a possibility for surviving a relatively long period of time.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Mann, please. And then councillor Mrs Parker?
I know there was discussion at BNP about including a digital version of information possibly. I just wanted to let you know, councillor Smith, about a publication that we've created for the special Christmas effort, which has a great deal of information in it and it does address the Covid pandemic. It's part of the work that we're doing with Tavistock Locals, help to sort of try and alleviate people who are on their own at Christmas time this year and can't meet with family and friends. The mayor's written an article for that as well and it's quite a good document, giving a picture of the town at this time of year. So I could give you an electronic copy of that if there is going to be an electronic version.
Yes, I'd be happy to receive that, Madam Mayor. We think, we're, I'm working with the others to iron out any problems that might take place if we do have electronic versions. The, the thing is that it needs to be able to be read in 50 or 100 years' time.
Indeed, thank you. Councillor Mrs Parker next, please.
I don't know whether it's appropriate, but how about a locally-made face mask? It's an idea.
That's an idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for those suggestions. That's councillor Barry Smith, please. You're not on mute, you need to be on, you're muted, Barry. Still can't hear you. It's better.
Okay now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it, would it be possible, practical to put a, a map of the town as it is at the early part of next year and possibly a breakdown of the, the population of the town? Just to give an indication of how it's changed over the years? If it's 50 to 100 years to time?
Thank you, that's another good, good idea. I'm sure councillor Smith will consider these and see, come back to you if he needs more information.
Madam Mayor, the thing is, I need to check with, with every, all the other contributors, what they're doing. So the space could be fairly, well, not fairly limited, but the space, obviously, we need to share it amongst every, all those participating.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Right, thank you for the work you're doing on that, councillor Smith. It's an interesting project, well done. Right, we move on to now, item nine, service reports. To receive for information, the following service reports. Number one, General Manager. It's been presented to you, General Manager's in attendance. Any updates from that, General Manager? No updates from it. Any questions to the General Manager about his report? Councillor Parker?
Forgive me, I've, I've lost the report on my second screen. But is this the one that refers to the Christmas trees, Wayne?
No, that's probably the next report.
In that case, just flag that up. I'll say it now, we, we, we on the Century Garden, thank you so much for all the effort that the team put into erecting that tree. It looks magnificent and it's a brilliant job, well done.
Thank you, yes. The lights and the trees are all looking really good, aren't they? Right, so no comments or questions on that? So thank you very much, General Manager. Nice concise report this time, they're getting shorter. What are you going to do when the Guildhall and the, the public groundwork is finished? Find something else to write about. Right, now we move on to the Town Hall, Butchers Hall and Works Department from Becky Rowe. Her report. Any comments or questions on that? I think members should note that that we're talking here about the town hall. To propose the town hall closure will be extended from the end of March until the end of July 2021. So disappointment, but it's understandable, I think, given the circumstances. Any comments or questions? No. Councillor Squire?
This was fully discussed at the Town Hall and Panier Market Consultative Group and seemed to be an acceptable and suitable arrangement that was managed to be introduced and taken through by, by officers present. So I thought it was a good contribution.
Thank you. So I think we note that report and thank Becky for it, thank you. We now move on to the Panier Market report, which is enclosed. Giving the Panier Market Christmas opening times and days. Any comments or questions from that, please? Right, thank you. Can we note that report then? Thank you. Item 10, Finance and Other Matters. To receive for information, the following report of the Assistant to the Town Clerk, which is enclosed. There will need to be some discussion, the civic baller, which is planned there for the 30th of April if the town hall is closed, that will not happen at that date. So we'll need to give that some consideration as to whether that happens or in a different format. But that's something for a bit later date, I think, when we know how things are moving on with Covid. Thank you to all those members who have attended training. It's good to see a good mix of members going to a number of training. Councillor Mrs Parker? You're on mute, Ginny.
Yeah. Can I just feedback? The training I went on was the Dalke Budget Training, which was shorter than last year's and covered exactly the same ground. My, my problem with it is that it's very much directed at parish councils who have just one, one member of staff, if that, and, and probably a new town clerk, parish clerk. So it's, it's no good for town councils or the bigger parish councils. And I'm just wondering whether it'd be possible for our representative, our councillor representative to feed that back to Dalke and ask if maybe they could find a trainer or some advice for councillors involved in bigger councils, whether the budget is necessarily much more complicated.
Thank you. I noticed, having been on the council for a long time and attended a lot of training over the time, the, there hasn't been a great variety of training topics. And if you've been to a finance one, if you go in a few years' time, it's usually the same stuff that's coming out, which is good for a number of councillors. So I think Dalke have got a new training person and hopefully we might get some new. And hopefully we might get some new subjects. Councillor Parker?
Yeah, as the, as the Dalke rep, I consider that to be an ambush from the next door room. But yes, yes, of course. I, I'll, I'll take that on board. And as, as the mayor says, there is a new training officer. She's reviewing all of the courses. Not on this particular course, but one or two members of Dalke have already said that the needs of larger councils are sometimes different from the needs of smaller councils. And I'll definitely raise this one at the next county meeting.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Councillor Hutton?
Just to reinforce the same thing, I went to one on internal controls a few days ago, and it was the same. It was mainly parish councillors, not the councillors, it was the clerks, and it was a very low level. Thank you.
Thank you.
It has to be for clerks. If, Madam Mayor, if, if members have any similar experiences, I'll, I'll bundle them all up into one comment, one feedback to Dalke. So if members get in touch with me, if they have any experience of training sessions, please let me know.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Thank you. Move on then to Town Hall and Markets Consultative Group meeting. Notes from the meeting of the 25th of November, which was chaired by Sorry, Madam Mayor. Come on.
Hello.
Councillor Mann and councillor Hutton.
Sorry, I just was back on the, the report from the Assistant Town Clerk.
I'm sorry.
Comment on the website accessibility update?
Right, thank you.
And I just wanted to ask the question whether we'd actually gotten any information back about videos and how video could be treated on the website yet, because I'd asked the question when we had the proposal to remove them after, I think, 30 days. Or after the next minutes had been approved. And I, I wanted to find out whether or not we really had to do that.
Thank you. Town Clerk, are you able to answer that, please?
We haven't. I will chase up. I, I think I copied councillor Mann in on the first response I had from the, can't remember, but the regulator who basically said not us folks, and then they referred us on to another government department. We've not had anything back, but obviously until such time as we do get something back, we won't be taking down any videos. So there won't be any loss there from that perspective, but I will chase it up. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Hutton?
Yes, this, I must declare a bit of an interest. It's some of the Covid-19 grant applications, because my wife is a trustee of the Mary Budding Trust. This is more, I, I, just a general question, though. I didn't know about this application until two days ago, when I read the, the notes for the meeting. So I asked my wife, I didn't know you'd applied to the council. And what I gather is that they, they were given some money with quite a few conditions. As for people who know, the Mary Budding basically gives out grants of equipment or anything to severely disabled people with special needs in the area, and doesn't own anything itself. It has money which it gives out. And it receives, I've seen the correspondence, there was a condition that basically they had to have these computers that they would give out to disabled people. They had to insure them, and they don't insure anything. And because of that, they then had to basically not get the grant. I want to, who decides what the conditions of giving a grant are? And, and, and do they come back to the people and say, this is a problem? Because I gather Mary Budding replied that they don't insure and suggested maybe that the school, that they were giving the computer to the kid. Maybe the school would insure it and wrote to the town council, but has not got a reply. So my question really is, who decides what the conditions are on these things? And how do people, because we want to give people, we want them to give them a grant. We really want to encourage them to get the grants.
Right, thank you. Town Clerk?
In, in terms of the process, the people who decide are typically the mayor, the deputy mayor and the immediate past mayor. Clearly on this occasion, because you had an interest by virtue of the application being submitted by your wife, councillor Hutton, it didn't come to you on that occasion. So that's the reason why you wouldn't have been. But for grant applications, which don't, you would actually be one of the parties. What is the normal process is that there is a preliminary report, which is prepared by the Assistant to the Town Clerk, which sets out the details of the application and the extent to which each application complies or does not comply with the terms of assistance under the coronavirus grant policy. That is then forwarded to the three members concerned. They review it as to whether or not they are minded to support or not a grant or the recommendation that is included within that. And then we go back either with seeking clarification on particular points in relation to the application which has been made, or go back with an offer, or go back saying that the application itself is non-compliant. So that's the essential process.
I can see that, but why, for example, who decides that the, this, this, this organisation, this charity has got to ensure something that they're giving away? It's that sort of thing. Where, where's that come from? And what's the point?
In, in, in relation to an application such as this, what, what the, what we would be looking at as a council is an assurance that whatever is being provided is not being provided to an individual child, but is available to children who are in need at the times when they are in need. As you'll be aware, the government itself has actually provided a programme of assistance for children, which provides for free computers for them. And I think, and I don't know, because I mean, you know, I'm speaking for three councillors here. But I, I think that the intention there was to be, to seek assurance that the Mary Budding Trust was providing something which was ongoing, of ongoing benefit to children, not to specific children. Because if it was to specific children, then of course there would need to be some form of accompanying needs assessment in relation to those children, and of course, confirmation that they were not eligible under the government scheme for free computers. I mean, I think probably, given the nature of your interest, I mean, we're happy to take this offline. I'm not sure that perhaps a council meeting is the easiest way to go through the details of a, of a specific application.
I think it was just more a general thing. I mean, this is just what I know about, but you know, I don't want people getting grants to find it too damn difficult. That's, that's part of the trouble. Thank you.
In normal circumstances, you would be a party to that decision-making process, as you, as you have been on a number of others.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
Councillor Parker, please.
Thank you. Just a matter of information. I've, I've been involved in giving grants to Mary Budding Trust through Rotary. And in fact, it's the first of the situations that the town clerk referred to. A piece of equipment is generally purchased for a child, and that equipment follows the child through the school. So the equipment generally is not for the school, it's specifically for a child.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Right, have we finished with the Assistant to the Town Clerk's report? So now move on to West Devon Borough Council report. To receive a report, West Devon Borough Council, councillor Mrs Ewing. Thank you for assisting for that report. Do you wish to say anything?
Only Madam Mayor, that virtually all the grant payments around, the payment dates, the payment applications close this Friday, but if anybody is made aware, and they're only just made aware type of thing, they can still be submitted. The authority doesn't want anybody to lose out on the opportunity to receive this funding. They're now on the back end of this, of having, I think they said there's 56 different businesses that they've got to ring individually virtually to see if they would like the money, as opposed to the other way around. But, but that's where they are. So all other grants have been paid now. And not as many people applied this time as last time.
No, I think it was interesting. I know I said, I worked for a charity and we applied last time and got something. This time, we didn't feel that we needed anything. Councillor Parker, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, councillor Ewing. The, you, you refer briefly at the end of the report to the Baker application on which we had a presentation last night. So I don't want to dwell on that. But during that application, it occurred to me that the council, this council had made representations to the Borough Council on education contributions and public transport contributions in respect of the Plymouth Road application. And that those matters which were supposed to be discussed at the Borough's DML Committee, I think back in October, were pulled from the report because they were to do with the section 106, and we've heard nothing about them since. Would it be possible to, for you to inquire what's happened to the discussion on education and public transport? And perhaps report back to us at a later date, please.
That happened last night, as well, councillor Parker. I will do, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Ewing.
That was one of your problems, Mandy.
Councillor Ward, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could just pull members' attention to the end of councillor Ewing's report with reference to a draft housing strategy. That is now out for consultation, and the Assistant to the Town Clerk has certainly sent me, and I see him to all members, a link to the consultation. Could I encourage members to have a look at that, please? It's not terribly long. And it's going to be discussed by DMNL in January. And we have, I think, until, is it the first of February, Mandy, to feedback on that?
It's been extended to the end of February now, councillor Ward.
Thank you. So DMNL will, will consider it in, in January. If members who are not on that committee would like to feed their views through to DMNL so that we can take those into account, that would be most helpful.
Thank you, councillor Ward. Councillor Moody, next, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I'd just like to thank councillor Ewing for, for the report. The particular issue that I'd like to just raise is the fusion update. Basically, just to remind members as much as we can to get the message out.
Councillor Moody, you seem to be on mute. You're muted.
I'm back again. Did, did you hear anything at all, what I was saying then?
No, start again, please.
Okay. Now, I'd just like to thank councillor Ewing for the, for the update. I'd like to just highlight on the fusion update. And just remind members that, that we all, as, as town members, it would be great if everyone could encourage everyone to, to, to pop down to Meadowlands and use the pool and use the facilities there to increase the, the footfall. Because obviously, you know, it's only natural that things have dropped off slightly. It's looking very good that the numbers are coming back up. But if we could just get the word out as, as members to encourage people to use that, because we'd like, we, we really would like to have the community support that facility as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moody. Any other questions on councillor Mrs Ewing's Borough Council report? Councillor Mrs Ewing? You're muted, Mandy.
Just to be cheeky and to ensure that the town clerk did see, we can no longer ring Catherine. No more Catherine Bowen for us, which I did put, no Catherine. But I think it's going to take all of us a long while to realise it's not Catherine, because she's been doing it well for nearly over 20 years, I think. So it'd be good to have somebody different.
Right. Right, thank you for your report, Mandy, presented in a easy-to-read format and a timely manner. So thank you for that. Move on now then to County councillor Mrs Celis's report. Nothing was received? No. Okay. Tavistock Bid Company Minutes, the meeting held on the 19th of November 2020. Any comments or questions? Looking at item three in the ballot, I thought it was ambitious for somebody on a few part-time hours to do as much as was expected there. Councillor Williamson, it's quite a lot to say. I don't know if you've got any comment to make on that, as well, member on the bid board?
Yeah, I, I think it's recognised, we're trying to find within the budget the resource to buy in expertise on the particular topic of a ballot. There are people out there who do that for a living, and we've contacted one of them. And it's fundamentally a budgetary issue, but we're also a little bit behind on the ballot because of all the exigencies of the Covid emergency sucking up the time of the bid manager. So it's, it's a combination of effects. We're meeting again tomorrow night to discuss, I think, the ballot and other topics about ongoing through the Christmas period.
Thank you. I know that the, the general manager, this isn't the minutes of the last meeting, but the general manager attended the, the last meeting of it. Wayne, did you wish to comment on that at all?
Not really, only to say that I think at that meeting, it was fully understood and acknowledged between both parties. See, the ongoing partnership work and productive partnership work that has been happening across a number of activities. So it was good to, to hear some very positive and supportive feedback from bid directors at that meeting.
Thank you. No more questions on that. We move on to IF Project Update. To receive any additional oral updating in connection with Tavistock Townscape Heritage Initiative Scheme and the Guildhall Gateway Centre Project. Town Clerk, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything additional to the general manager's report, other than to advise that we still await to hear the outcome of the application through NLHF to kickstart in relation to Covid-related costs and associated matters for the Guildhall. We do expect to hear that over the course of this week. We'd hope to be able to tell you tonight, but we don't know yet. So thank you.
Thank you. I think they were considering it today, weren't they? So it's probably early days yet for us to hear about it. Okay, thank you. G, to receive any updates or more questions to council representatives serving on other outside bodies in connection with the work of those bodies. Councillor Williamson?
It's just to advise the council that the Oak Rail Forum, which I'm the designated councillor to attend, obviously hasn't been meeting. I've missed Zoom meetings. But the whole purpose of the forum has been completely overtaken by government action or decisions to reopen the railway to Oakhampton, and there's lots in the media about that topic. So I wouldn't say my work is done, because I did very little on, on that forum. But it's generally good news, provided that government follows through with what it's promised.
Thank you. As somebody who went to many meetings of the Oak Rail Forum and its predecessor, the Destination Oakhampton, I was very pleased to hear that. And of course, the, the end aim is that that railway line will come back then to Tavistock eventually. But it's a small step, but it's a positive one. Councillor Parker?
Thank you. I also am one who in years past has been a member of that forum. All I can say is, well done, you've, it's achieved a lot. Just a question, Paul. The, the group that got the front page of the Tabby Times last, last week, I think it was, with this network of rail proposals, what status does that group have? It, it, it appeared from the Tabby Times that it's quite a powerful group, but I'm not quite sure.
I, I don't know really either. I went to several of the Oak Rail Forum meetings, and there was a lot of internal strife at one point, and the group disintegrated, partly disintegrated. And then out of the ashes, what you're seeing has popped up. And I think it's the, the key individuals who are the motors behind it just regenerated and have done some good public relations work. I think essentially that was it.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Parker, please.
Yes, I attended the meeting that Debo Celis organised with the Office for the Police and Crime Commissioner, Alison Hernandez, at which we put a lot of questions. It was very good attendance. And a number of councillors at town and borough councillors were there. A lot of concern about certain A lot of concern about certain roads, Callington Road, Witchchurch Road, Anderton Lane, the usual suspects. And opportunities were given to put information straight to the Office for the Police and Crime Commissioner, rather than going round the loop, as it were. However, I have had a response to the questions back from Devo today. And it's all rather, well, we can't really do anything. The problem with Devon is it's lots of lanes and people drive fast. Sort of, you know, nothing really of an opportunity there. However, it is positive that we can get through to Alison Hernandez, as long as, of course, she gets re-elected, because she'll only be here until May next year.
Okay, thank you. I think several of us were at that meeting. Councillor Smith, please.
Well, it's just a general point, Madam Mayor. All of us are attending lots of Zoom meetings or have been attending this year. And the fact that you have chaired the council meetings the way you have is absolutely superb. But I just wanted to make the point to you that the words mute and unmute have been named as the words of the year by the Oxford English Dictionary. So well done you for using them.
Right, thank you, councillor Smith. You can mute now. Thank you. Councillor Mrs Ewing?
Just on that note, Madam Mayor. The West Devon earlier, we just had a Covid update. And apparently, the officers there have a charity that they're giving as officers to three different named charities. The amount of times they have to say mute and unmute, they have to pay a pound for every time they're told.
Oh, right. Okay, thank you. I'll try not to use it then. Right, any other updates, please? Councillor Crawford?
I've got a delay. Sorry, I've got a delay on my iPad, so it's a bit difficult. Just to say, I've attended, and I think Ginny has also attended, two meetings of the Devon Carbon Plan launch. And just to remind people that the consultation is live and online. So as individuals, we can fill that in. So it's been really interesting, actually, to hear about it. I was trying to write it up today, but didn't have time. But the one on transport today was really, really interesting. And I see, I think you're going to one later in the week, aren't you, Ginny? Related to the built environment. So I think they're really good. The only downside with the consultation, again, is I started to try and complete it. There doesn't seem to be any sort of save function. So I got so far through it, and it's quite long by the look of it. And I think I'm just going to have to go back to it and start all over again. But it's really just worth looking at. So if you could do that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you send us the link to that, please, Lesley? So that we...
Jan sent it through to us about a week ago, I think, was it, Jan? So yeah, you should have it in...
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, any other updates or feedback from training? Councillor Parker?
It's a question, Madam Mayor, to councillor Crawford. The Carbon Plan, is there an opportunity for any of our, either of our committees to consider that, to give a town council response?
Yes, it does involve organisations. I mean, I wasn't quite sure whether I had the remit to be able to do that. So I just did it as an individual. But I'm happy to do that from the Sustainability Group, if people are happy with that. And perhaps people could fill it in from their perspective? Because people, different people have different sort of strengths in terms of that. I know that Ginny, again, had the built environment. Actually, I was looking at waste. I'm not sure if that was on the agenda. But yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you. We move on then to item 11, which is to receive such communications or reports as may be submitted by the town mayor. I don't have any communications or reports, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank you all for your enormous efforts this year. It's been a very challenging year. I've been on the council now for 17 years, and I think it's been the most challenging year that I've certainly faced. It's been difficult for us all, and I think we've all adapted and everybody's worked hard. Attending some meetings has been amazing. So thank you very much indeed for all that. And I wish you all a very, very Merry Christmas and a, let's hope for a better and a healthier 2021. And that's to all members and to all staff, because I think everybody's worked very hard this year. So thank you very much indeed, everybody.
And the same to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, yeah. Item 12, urgent matters brought forward at the discretion of the town mayor. I have none. So then we move to exclusion of press and public. So we will finish this meeting now, and then in 10 minutes, we will come back and do part two, please.